That's going to be on the test tomorrow. And we can work from there and essentially decide what are the best things to go through. So, okay, well, we start the whole course with separation, separation. Separable. Already I can't spell separable. Differential equations. And great, we've done dealt with that before. Then we have exact. I'm blowing up memory here a little bit, so. How about I open up the, oh, I actually can't open up, so. Probably most of you have not heard this. If you've ever heard this, but I'm having very bad internet issues. Not with anything except Ryerson. I cannot connect to anything from the Ryerson domain, so.
Oh, don't worry, it's not just you, it's, I think it's an actual problem.
It's a problem other people are experiencing too?
Well, me in particular.
Yeah. You can't access anything Ryerson?
For some reason, sometimes, I don't know, I've been, I've been dealing with it for a while, but they don't seem to particularly care.
For me, it seems like a Rogers issue, so we're in contact with Rogers. But I cannot access D two L or my Ryerson or any of my Zoom lectures or.
I'm Rogers too, but I'm a.
You're not having issue, yeah, so it seems like it's something with.
So I should, we shouldn't, you shouldn't do the test then tomorrow. It should be like.
I'm at the SLC, I booked the SLC, that's my, that's, that's how I'm dealing with that.
What are all your classes?
I either go to the SLC or I'm gonna go, I go to Starbucks for the past few days and watching my lectures there. Waiting for a response from Rogers, today we got a response from Rogers, so I'm gonna talk to them either tonight or tomorrow still. We'll see how that goes. But, yeah, that's, that's, that's what I've been dealing with. Anyways, I have the list actually right here in front of me, I didn't even have to look it up, so that's good. So then we go on to, well, let me just kind of sum this up, so, yeah, we have homogeneous. Homogeneous linear differential equations, second order specifically, right? And then we start talking about non-homogeneous. Linear differential equations, and from there, we have two different methods, which is very, well, the first one is. Undetermined coefficients. Okay, and then we have variation of parameters, okay? From there. What else is gonna be on the? Test is just the definition of the Laplace. And so there are some. Interesting questions in a lot of these sections, now, I'm just gonna highlight the ones that I think we don't need to really do. So I'm gonna say separable. Exactly could do, but we've done a lot of practice of that, I feel like that would be at most one question, so I think these are worth more, so I'm gonna say. Get a yellow one on that. We're good to go with separable. And if you disagree with anything I'm putting here, then. I think very, these two, we need to work on, those are, those are important to know how to do, that's, that's probably gonna be a very big part. And then just using the Laplace transform. And I guess I'd, I'd put these guys in, you know, not other non-homogeneous, I mean, that kind of goes in with that. And homogeneous ones, I think I'm gonna give a green one to as well, homogeneous ones, you just solve the characteristic. Yeah.
Adam, what do you, what do you mean by using the Laplace transform? Because up until this point, all we've really done is just taken a function and gotten the Laplace of it, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean, that's what I.
Okay, okay, like doing the integral and all that?
Yeah, yeah. It's like, how do you find the Laplace of a, of a function? Exactly, yeah, well, solving a differential equation with it is, is actually not that many extra steps, we had the lecture this week, but. Not on this test.
Oh, so do you know how many questions?
I, I know he said, I think it's eight, someone correct me?
Three, four, it's seven, one, one short answer, then five long answers?
Okay, then there you go.
Wait, is it a two hour exam?
It's one ten, a hundred minutes.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
I don't know why.
He likes a hundred, right?
He likes a hundred. But that is the number he chose, so we're gonna go with that.
About it is, perhaps, perhaps how, how would allocate it, it's like nineteen minutes to do the work and ten minutes for you to submit your answers. Because like, yeah, because like, you need the time to actually like scan it and upload it. And you don't want to like, um, you know, have any disappointments. So, yeah, the, so, yeah, extra ten minutes for you, I would actually, I would actually like, I'll take only nineteen minutes to do it.
Yeah, cuz you need to deal with all that stuff, submitting stuff, that'll take some, so make sure you have some sort of plan for that. But let's begin, I guess, I just got a question in for an exact differential equation. So how about we do that first, just to refresh a little bit on exact differential equations? And also get rid of this yellow that's right here, and then we can just focus fully on, on this more important stuff. But, you know, this stuff is still on the test, so it's, it's important, but it's just like, takes less work, I guess. So this is the question I just got.
Hey, just before we start, let me know, need another streamer, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, well, I don't know, do we have that many people? Uh, yeah, we do have that many people, actually. Yeah, so could you, if that's possible?
Uh, yeah, one second.
Sure, thank you, yeah. Nice to see lots of people coming in today. So, okay, let's begin with this. Exact differential equation.
Are you recording?
I am recording, we're good. Uh, and I'll make sure to post it right after, again, if I forget, I'm kind of bad at remembering that kind of stuff, but if I forget, just tell me and then we can. Work from there, oh, yeah, and as always, my notes are available at my website, which is. Right here, tutorial.ca slash notes, and I have my differential equations and vector calculus notes. Right here, and we talk all the way up to everything, including the test material, I, I didn't write more notes after the test material. But so the test material ends here, you know, this is all that stuff, so hopefully that's.
Front page looking better, bro.
What's looking better?
Front page of the website, I would see.
Oh, yeah, 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 I've updated it a little bit, updated the website a little bit, so it has lots of things there, so if you're interested in stuff I do, you can click around there. Anyways, let's take a look at this exact differential equation, so first of all, is it in the correct form? Right, is, is it something, some function of x and y, dx, and some function of x and y, dy equals zero? It is fantastic, that's exactly what we wanted, so I'm gonna go to my exact differential equation notes, just so I have it here. And so we need to check if it is exact, so we're gonna just check. This is the right form, but we have to check if it's actually like by definition, an exact differential equation, and what you do is you, you take this. And you take the derivative with respect to y, and you take this, and you take the derivative with respect to x. Yeah, that makes sense. And so from there, what's gonna happen is those have to be equal, if those are equal, then we're good. So three, so I'm gonna say P of x, that, that thing right here in front of our dx is our P of x. And this is our Q of y, uh, Q of x, what am I talking about, Q of x? So, uh, take the derivative of P with respect to y. So let's try what that might be, so, you know, I'm gonna rewrite it just so that I can see it. Not that my writing is actually nicer, but just that it's my writing, so I can read it a little bit easier. So it's three x squared cosine x y minus x cubed y. I guess that's not supposed to be a multiplication, like that, there's no plus here, that's supposed to be a. Multiplication sine. X y plus or x, so that is our dx term, and then our dy term is eight y minus x to the fourth sine. Y, d y, so the check for exactness is we're just checking, is this true? That's, that's what we're checking, if that's true. All right, are the two partial derivatives with respect to y, with respect to x, the same? So let's figure that out, let's see, with respect to y of this first thing, well, three x squared is a constant, with respect to y. Derivative of cosine is negative sine, so it's gonna be negative three x squared sine x y. But then you have to take the derivative of the inside with respect to y, so that's just gonna be x, so it's gonna be an x cubed. On there, right, just your chain rule, same thing here, derivative of sine is, is cos, it's gonna be negative x cubed y. Sin x y, but you gotta take the derivative of the inside with respect to y, so x is a constant, multiply by x. Add it up there, and then that's a constant as well. Okay?
Sorry, isn't it?
It's cool.
Yeah.
Cuz if you have a y on the outside.
We have a y on the outside, yeah, that's true, very good point, so, yes, we do.
Also.
And also what's, right?
Uh, and also.
Oh, you're, you're cutting out a little bit, can't quite hear you, so.
Uh, it's also cos when you.
Take this derivative, it's gonna be cos, yeah, that's true, I heard, I heard just through there, through the, through the cutting out there. Yeah, yeah, I, I made it out, yeah, good, good, okay, yeah, so that, that's true, it's gonna be the change, the, the product rule. So, yeah, that, that's true, so, uh, x cubed is still a constant in the front, derivative of y with respect to y is one. So then you're just gonna have sine. X y there, and then minus x cubed, cuz the minus x cubed still comes in, still a constant in the front there. Y times the derivative of sine, which is cosine x y times x, right, which x can just go up here. And then derivative of four x with respect to y is zero, so there we go, that is our thing, and then I can, I can combine these terms here, which is just going to be one. Negative three x cubed sine x y, negative x cubed sine x y, can combine to negative four x cubed. Sin x y. Yeah, minus x to the four y cosine x y. Great, uh, let's check if the partial derivative of Q with respect to x is also the same thing, so up here. With respect to x, uh, the derivative of eight y is zero, right, so just put zero. And then we just have this whole term here, so we're just taking the derivative of this with respect to x, so again, it's gonna be a product rule thing, it's gonna be negative. Four x cubed sine x y, okay, good start, and then we want to add. We wanna add, uh, negative four x cubed, so minus, sorry, not four x cubed, sorry. Negative. X to the four. A times the derivative of sine x y with respect to x, so that's going to be cosine. X y. Times your y on the outside, if you can just stick here, and we can see that these are exactly the same. So since the partial derivative of P with respect to y is equal to the partial derivative of Q.
What about chain rule, did you not apply that?
Exactly, I did, yeah, where, what do you mean?
Uh, for minus x to the four y cosine x y, shouldn't it be x to the five, no?
Uh, no, with, do you mean, like, like I'm taking the derivative of this?
Yeah, the derivative of the inside, yeah, yeah, exactly.
With respect.
The derivative of the inside is y.
Yeah, with respect to x, so it's gonna be a y as a constant?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, thank you.
And then the y comes out, yeah, no problem. Okay, so it is exact, now that we know that it is exact. Oh, let's take a look how we do this, oh, yeah. So, um, we know that if u of x y is a solution, that the partial derivative of u with respect to x is gonna be equal to P. And that the partial derivative of u with respect to y is gonna be equal to Q. Okay, why do we know that? Look at the first lesson that we did together. But we do know that, so we gotta figure out what u is, we wanna figure out what u is, it's a solution to this differential equation, so. I'm going to take this equation here, uh, so the partial derivative of u with respect to x equals, well, P, P was this whole thing. So, uh, three x squared cosine x y, so three x squared cosine x y. Minus x cubed y sine x y, minus x cubed y. Sin x y. Plus four x. Okay, and now to figure out what u is, I'm gonna integrate with respect to x on both sides. And so on the left side, I just have u, and now I gotta integrate this whole thing with respect to x.
Wait, sorry, um, just going back, you found your two exact things and you realized that they're the same, what was the next step? Sorry.
The next step is that if I, if I have some solution like this, I know that this equation's true and this equation's true. I get two equations.
Yeah, okay, and P we found and Q we found.
P we know from, this is P, that's P, and that's Q. That's from the thing, this is not P or Q, this is just checking the derivatives to see if they're the same, but this is, that's P.
Alright.
Makes sense? So now we have a couple integrals to do, so the integral, uh, well, three times the integral of x squared cosine x y. Minus y times the integral of x cubed sine x y. Plus four times the integral, oh, sorry, I'm missing a bunch of dxs here. dx, dx, four x dx, so I just split it into a couple integrals, notice the y comes out because it's a constant. And now, this looks like, I guess, it's a integration by parts question, I guess, so. Yeah, I would try, I mean, it's like clearly integration by parts, but just I'm trying to see if there's a simpler way of doing it. So the reason it's clearly integration by parts, I should be, I should say, is because we have a product of two things. And one of those things gets simpler when I take the derivative. Because of that, and the other thing doesn't get more complicated when I take the antiderivative, so it's perfect for integration by parts. So looks like I'm just gonna have to do that twice, and then then. Three times, that's gonna be a little bit long, but let's see. So, uh, integration by parts, we select, now, u is a bad variable, but I'm gonna have to do it, cuz I, I get confused if I do not u. So u is equal to x squared, we choose the variable that gets simpler when it gets, um, we take the derivative of it, so this gets simpler, right? X squared turns into two x, and dv is gonna be whatever's left, so cosine x y dx now. Du is equal to two x dx, and v is equal to one over y sine. X y. So now, how did I do that? How did I figure out? This, it's, it's really just a use up, uh, but whenever you have a function like this, it's, it's just a function, and then it's a constant multiple of x. Remember the chain rule, if I take the derivative of this, right, derivative of this, what's gonna happen? Is it's gonna be one over y cosine x y times y, those will cancel, and I'm gonna get what I started with. So whenever you have a function, that's, that's, you know, if you know the derivative of f of x, then the. Don't take this true for every single possible function, but for, you know, some functions like this, like exponential functions or cosine functions, if you have kx, right? Then f prime. Uh, f of kx. Prime is just one over k, f of kx. Uh, f prime of kx, sorry. Right, so that's what I did here. And so I just did that kind of backwards.
If you, if you multiply a three n and then integrate our three x squared, you just get a x cubed, is that?
Oh. If I, sorry, what was it?
You multiply the three back in and you did dv as three x squared.
Uh, three. Integrate that, I would get.
X cubed.
Oh, and then. And then these terms would match, you're saying?
I get rid of the three, I think that's might be easier.
It'd be what, sorry?
Uh, we would just get rid of the three.
Um. In, in, like, this three right here, gonna get rid of that? Yeah, I mean, that, the three is not really causing us much trouble, it's the fact that I have to do integration by parts a bunch of times. But I'm thinking now, if I, if I did that, then sine one over y, and then I'd have an x cubed in there, that's actually kind of an interesting. Idea. This would totally work, what we're doing here, nothing wrong with this. And it would be a little tedious, but let me just put it to the side for one second and see if there's actually like a clever way of doing this with that, that's, that's, that's. Good idea. Because I'm just thinking that if I put the three back in, and I set my u to be cosine x y. And my dv to be three x squared dx, then du. Is one over y, um, no, sorry, y times sine x y. DX. Uh, dx, yeah.
Negative y. Alright.
Negative y?
The derivative of cos is negative sine?
Yeah, and then the derivative of this is that integrate, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, that's true, sorry. And then this would be integrating this, I would just have x cubed. Let's see, whatever, um, and so then now, this would turn into, actually, this is probably, probably how they meant you to do it. U equals, so now we have uv, so x cubed cosine x y. Minus the integral. Of v, which is x cubed du, so the, the negative y can come out there, and then it's gonna be sine. X y. And the reason this is anything interesting, and this is anything to note. DX plus, well, this is gonna be two x squared here, right, at the end, four, integral of four. X dx, it's that, uh, the reason this is anything useful is because. It's canceled. And so we get u equals x cubed cosine x y plus two x squared.
So you could do integration by parts even though you have three separate integrals?
That's fine, yeah, yeah, because for each integral, you can do integration by part, so if I were to go fully with the integration by parts, how I was gonna. I'd have to do two steps here and three steps here, that's five steps of integration by part, that's a lot.
Oh, so that, that integration by parts is only applying for the first integral that you have?
Only for, only for that, yeah, yeah, you can only deal with each integral at a time. Um, but since we did this little trick here, which, you know, suggested.
What trick?
Well, essentially, it was just like. The, the, essentially, what it was is that I just noticed that this, this right here, x cubed sine x y. I can almost get that from this somehow, like, it's pretty close, right? And so you really just had to notice here, this is like a trick question that, not really a trick question, but the, you could, you could totally do it with normal integration by parts. Just like going forward, doing twice here and three times here, five steps of integration, that would be a long time. But what I just noticed here is that if I make this other choice for u and dv, I knew that I would get an x cubed sine x y in my new integral here. And that would cancel with this one. Right? These two would, these two would.
Oh, yeah, so instead of doing like two sets of integrals, yeah, that's, that's really lucky if you see it, but.
Very lucky to see that one, yeah, right, very lucky to see that one, otherwise it would be five steps. But anyways, there is our, there's our u, so now I figured out what u is, so I don't need this anymore. Great? So I know that du dx is equal to P, great, I also know that du or partial u by partial y is equal to Q, right? So I can now, uh, I know, I can figure out both sides of this equation, actually, right? Oh, I should be clear, um, we have plus h of y here, okay, so instead of a plus c at the end of all this integration, right? I have a plus h of y, cuz any function of y, if I took the x derivative, would just cancel out, just like a constant. And so I have plus h of y here, okay, and I don't know what h of y is, it's my, it's my constant, but since this is an exact differential equation, we can figure out exactly what it is. So I can figure out my left side, the partial derivative of this with respect to y, so that's going to be x cubed, and that's gonna be negative. Sin x y, and the derivative of the inside with respect to, with respect to y is gonna be x, so put a four there. With respect to y, that term goes away, and then I just have plus h prime of y, so that's our left side of this equation. And the right side is just Q, which is what we had here, which was eight y minus x to the four sine x y. Eight y minus x to the four sine x y, luckily. These two things cancel, and I get h prime of y is equal to eight y. So h of y is equal to eight times the integral of y dy. Which is eight times y squared over two, which is four y squared. So h of y is that, and so finally, our solution, u. Implicit solution, u. Is this whole thing, x cubed cosine x y. Plus two x squared. Plus h of y. And there is our implicit solution. So I set it equal to zero because it's a implicit equation. Instead of equal to anything you want, doesn't matter.
Yeah, the right side came from the question, sorry.
The right side as in like, like here, the second?
Yeah, the y one is x to the four.
Yeah, that was the Q from the question. That was Q from the question. So, uh. Yeah, that was our exact differential equation question, any questions about all that, the whole process there? There is.
Just real quick, can you, just to make sure, first you integrated with respect, can you just scroll up for a second, I just wanna double check that with the same thing? I know, that's fine, uh, that's too far, like the last couple lines. Right? Yeah. Alright, so you integrated with respect to x first, and then you differentiated with respect to y, is that the rule you took?
Here I, here I integrated with respect to x, and then I got this equation here.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, and then I took the derivative of that with respect to y.
Yeah.
And then I got, I got Q on this side, and then I got this equation, and then I just integrate both sides with respect to y.
Yeah, I did the opposite, but it's the same thing, that's cool.
Did you get the same answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you probably switched some other things around too, but yeah, that's good. Okay, so, um, we have that, that's good, any other questions about this?
Also, you skipped the step where you took the partial derivative of y, right? Once you first took your integral?
Where I take the partial derivative of.
So you know when you first found your u, and then you found, then you took the partial derivative in terms of y? You didn't show your work for that, right?
Yeah, there wasn't too much work to show, I guess.
Okay.
It was just the partial derivative of that, that goes away. Yeah.
I had a question over here?
Yeah, of course.
So, um, in Kim's lectures, uh, he, like, on one of the early practice quizzes, he mentioned, uh, like, one of the questions was like, uh, regarding a fun, the fundamental set. I remember he went over, eh, with one of the theorems with the Ron skin when he first introduced it. Um, would that type of question be on the test or probably not? Because the Ron skin's more used for, um, variation of parameters, rather than checking if something is part of the fundamental set.
Yeah.
A question like that in one of the past midterms, so I think there is a chance that might, they might ask you to, uh, prove something using the Ron, Ron skins.
I think the problem is I don't know what the, who the normal prof is that does this class, but like, if they ask you about the Ron scheme to, like, proving reduction of order, or whatever it was. Like, that's a, more of like a, they're testing your theoretical knowledge, like, they're testing if you know how to prove that this thing can't be a thing. I don't know if Shul's like, type of person to give questions, like Horowitz is, cuz we all know who Horowitz is, it's like, but like, I don't know if Kim does that.
Yeah, it was just about the gentleman from two forty, I don't think he would put a question like that.
I wasn't asking more of a reduction formula, it was more like, um, it was used, the Ron scheme was used to prove whether something was part of the fundamental set or not, and I wasn't.
Oh, yeah, I remember those questions, actually, I brought it up to Adam in a previous tutorial, and this is, uh, this is one of the things he said, uh. Shul said in lectures that we're not gonna be asked to do these type of questions with fundamental sets, because those, those problems are usually. They're usually homogeneous equations with another equation, or with another function in front of it as a coefficient. And that's what the Ron skins usually use for, to prove that it's a fundamental set, to prove it's a solution. And, uh, the only thing he said we'd have to do with that is we'll already be given solutions to it, otherwise we can't solve those type of equations.
Okay, sounds good?
Yeah, anything with. Is usually reserved for math majors.
Yeah, otherwise, yeah, otherwise the Ron skin is just variation of parameters. And the other thing with the Ron skin is if it equals zero, then it is a fundamental set of solutions, that's it.
Gotcha, thank you.
Also, it just has to equal zero. Let's look at our definition here, uh, I have it open.
Yeah, but for it to equal zero, you have to know the y one and y two, remember, you have to know two of the solutions.
Yeah, well, you're checking.
To know at least one.
You're checking. So if the, here's the definition of the Ron skin, right? Ron skin, i- if you have a bunch of your, uh, solutions, your homogeneous differential equation, then they are linearly independent if and only if the Ron skin is not zero. Ron skin is not zero. And then they are a, the fundamental set is a set of solutions which are linearly independent. So if it is zero, then you have an issue, but you just have to prove that it's not.
Yeah, sorry, I said it is your, I said it is your, yeah, I meant it's not zero.
Yeah, that's okay, don't worry, don't worry, yeah, just clarify here, so it has to be not zero. Um, and if it's not zero, so exactly the same, like, like when you take a determinant of a matrix, if the determinant is zero, then you have a, uh. A bunch of problems, but you have a matrix that doesn't have an inverse essentially, and the columns are linearly dependent if your determinant is zero. Um, so same thing here, if your columns are linearly dependent, the functions and their derivatives are linearly dependent, then your determinant will be zero, otherwise you'll have a non-zero determinant.
So this is where we would need y one and y two, um, in advance?
Yeah.
Yeah, you need, you need to know, yeah, you need to, you would be given functions and check if they're linearly independent.
I think there was a textbook question he assigned where he only gave y one and not y two. So you might have to check on that, and I think five point two or five point three is homework. So you might have to check on that in, I think, five point two or five point three's homework.
Of order, right? Maybe that's why.
Yeah.
Like, you probably want us to find Y two.
Probably they want you to find reduction. Yeah, exactly. That's true. That would be here. That would be reduction of order here. But we will look at that. Um, okay. Uh, let's take a look at other questions I have here. Now I circled a couple of them. So let's take a look, I guess. Documenting here, I'd say we're done with exact differential equations. Can I? Highlighted here. Now we got these guys to deal with, right? So undetermined coefficients, variation of parameters, all that kind of stuff. I'd say let's start with variation of parameters. Um, and then let's move on to. It might seem a little bit backwards, but. Doing it. Um, so let's take a look here. We have, um. Variation of parameters. Now. Someone sent me a question. That's, they, I think they, they said variation of parameters, but it's from the, it's actually from the. Uh, undetermined coefficients section. It's actually better as an undetermined coefficient question. So we'll deal with it there, but, uh, let's just try, oh, wow. Uh, these are kind of scary looking questions. Uh, let's see, use variation parameters. Let's see what's assigned to us. Uh, five point seven is number three. So this is assigned to us. Oh, yeah, I did that one. Five was this one.
Six is pretty good.
Six is a good question? Uh, yeah.
It's easy to screw up. I don't know if it's a good question.
I was gonna say, I was like, define good.
Yeah. Uh, illustrative. That's, that's what I'm trying to go.
The baby questions.
Yeah.
I don't know. Is it better to practice harder questions or easy questions to understand the concept?
Okay, let's, yeah.
To understand the concept, it's better to do easy ones and then do a hard one right after, to see how the skills translate over.
That's true. Okay, let's try.
Even the easier ones in the textbook are brutally long, like, there's so much stuff to do.
Let's try six and then thirteen. Uh, I do have to, I need the prompt for thirteen. Um, and then, we'll see from there. That, that'll probably take a while, so.
Thirteen gave us Y one and Y two. I think that's.
Okay, let's try this one. Uh, so solve this linear differential equation by variation of parameters. So what you have to do is, well, you always, whenever you do this, is you say, well, the general solution is the. Complementary solution plus a particular solution. Complementary solution is the solution to this guy. Right, which is just, let's say, M squared minus one equals zero. M equals plus or minus one. So this is a, two real roots, two, uh, distinct real roots. Um, and so our Y complementary is in the form C one E to the X plus C two E to the negative X. Okay, so that's just.
Well, given the time that we have on the test, do you think we would have a scenario where they're the same point?
Uh, yeah, where it's like zero, where it's like three and three, you get it the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could. And, and then your complementary, so let's say you got, let's say you got M equals three and three, right? You got that twice. Then your complementary solution. Would be E, uh, C one E to the three X plus C two X E to the three X.
Yeah, but like usually to get to that point where you have three and three, uh, wouldn't you have to do like that long division sort of stuff? Or could, or are you allowed to just run it through, like, decimals or something?
Well, you're not allowed to run it through decimals, but I mean, you can put it in the quadratic formula, right? You can put it in the quadratic formula, and then from there. You can see that you get the same roots.
You will probably get a question with repeated roots, because it means they have, they get to test you on you, you choosing undetermined coefficients, so.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, so here we go. We have our complementary solution. Now, the variation of parameters method tells us that. We have a particular solution that is equal to U one Y one plus U two Y two. Uh, what's Y one and Y two? That's Y one. That's Y two. What's U one and U two? Good question. Well, I can tell you that U one prime is equal to, uh, the determinant of zero. Then that thing, I'll just call that G of X for now, just for a second. Okay, G of X. And then our second column is the second. Uh, solution, so E to the negative X and its. Derivative. Okay. Over the Ronskin of our two solutions. And similarly, you want a U two prime. Is essentially flipped. Our first column. Is the first thing, so E to the X and its derivative, and the second column is that guy. And also over the Ronskin of Y one and Y two. Okay, and we can just work this out. But that takes some time, but we can't just work it out. Um, usually you start with working out the Ronskin, because you need it for both, so let's just start with that. Find the Ronskin of our two complementary solutions, so E to the X and E to the negative X. What's the Ronskin of these two functions? Well. It is a matrix, two by two matrix, because there's two functions. Start by writing the two functions in order, and then their derivatives in order. And notice that the left column is that there, the right column. I said the wrong one. The left column is that there and the right column is that. Okay, um, now you can work this out. So, uh, determinant is that times that minus that times that. So this times this is negative one. Minus this times this, that times that is one. So we get negative two is our Ronskin. Um, if that was confusing, tell me. Um, again, sorry, I'll have the.
Alright, hold on. Stupid question. If I change, a stupid question. If I change Y two to be Y one and I evaluate the Ronskin, I'm getting positive two.
Uh huh. Yeah.
Is that right?
That's fine, as long as you stick with that, as long as you stick with it. As you always call this. You're gonna what?
No, I'm gonna go with, with what you go with.
With what I go with, okay, sure. It, it's fine, you'll get the same answer, but, uh, eh, yeah, just stick with it the whole time. Called, if you call that Y two, then even in here, that has to be Y two. That should go here, and this should be Y one. It has to be the, the right order. So like, Y one, that's Y one there, and it's derivative. Y two is second one, so that's Y two there and it's derivative. That, that has to be in the right order. Um, okay, so carrying on. Uh, Ronskin was negative two, so now I can simplify a little bit. U one prime is equal to negative a half. Uh, times the determinant of, well, of that whole thing. Okay, I'll, I'll leave it as there. So I'll, I'll actually write it now. So the thing after was four E to the negative X. Four E to the negative X over one minus E to the negative two X. And then E to the negative X, negative E to the negative X there. That's U one prime. Uh, yeah, that's U one prime. Um, this up a little bit. And then U two prime. Is going to be, um, the determinant of E to the X, E to the X. E to the X, zero, and then the same thing, four E to the negative X over one minus E to the negative two X. Determinant, and then you have just a negative a half in the front, because we gotta divide by the Ronskin. Okay, now let's figure out what these determinants are. So again, determinant is always this times this minus this times this. Zero times negative E to the X is zero, so we just have minus this times this. And so just negative, um, E to the, well, I'll just write it down. E to the negative X. Times four E to the negative X over one minus E to the negative two X. So the negative and the negative will cancel, of course, so it's one half. E to the negative X multiplied by E to the negative X is E to the negative two X. Over one minus E to the negative two X. Two and four cancel to two. And there is our U one prime. Okay, we will deal with what U one is in a second by integrating this. But I'll deal with that in a second. Let's get U two prime. Uh, U two prime is negative a half times determinant. This times this minus this times this. So it's, this times this is zero, so we just want this times this now. And E to the X, well, I'll just write it. E to the X times four E to the negative X over one minus E to the negative two X. Well, E to the X times E to the negative X is E to the zero, which is one. So it's just four over one minus E to the negative two X. And the two and the four will cancel into a two. Great. Now, we know what U one prime is and what U two prime is. We just can find what U one and U two are, the actual functions. By integrating. Question?
Well, can U two be, uh, negative?
Let's take a look. Yes, it should, yeah, there's a negative a half in the front there, and that didn't go anywhere. Yep, it should be negative. Thank you. Um, okay, so now that we see this, uh, let's take a look at integrating it. So U one is equal to two times the integral. Of E to the negative two X over one minus E to the negative two X. So how we're gonna do this, uh, DX. How we're gonna do this is we're gonna do a U sub. But first, just to make it really obvious what I'm doing, I'm just gonna split that numerator, I'm gonna rewrite it even. Into E to the negative X, E to the negative X, over one minus E to the negative two X. To make it even more obvious, I'm gonna leave that here. I'm just gonna move E to the negative X DX out here. And so I'm gonna make the U sub, U equals E to the negative X. DU equals negative E to the negative X. DX. And so we can fill this in. By having a, uh, E to the negative X is U over one minus U squared. Right, so let me just write that as E to the negative X squared. Um, and DU, but we're just missing that negative sign, so you see how E to the negative X DX is that right there, but we're just missing a negative sign, so I'm just going to. Um, stick a negative sign at the end there.
I see. So this is a complete side note, because I did a question that's, uh, similar to this. But I had to integrate something like, uh, E to the three X. Uh, over, uh, E to the two X plus one. So would you have to do that same thing where you break your numerator into two separate, uh, Es?
E to the two X plus one, like that?
Uh, yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, you do the same thing. Yeah, you do.
So you wouldn't be able just to do a U sub directly with what you have?
Uh, well, I mean, you're, I pretty much am. I'm just doing this to illustrate what I'm doing more precisely, right? Just to show exactly that, that's, that's what's happening. I would, I would say U equals E to the X works here.
Adam?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I was, all I was just gonna say is U equals E to the X works here, and then this would turn into, you know, I'm ignoring a bunch of integration stuff. Um, but it would be U squared over U squared plus one. Because one of the E to the Xs gets gobbled up by the derivative.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense? It's not cubed here, because one of the E to the X is gone.
And that's, that's integrable.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, I don't know really. Yeah, yeah, it is. Yeah, it's.
Alright, thank you.
Adam, would it be possible to leave the two in the numerator and then treat the entire denominator as our U? And then use of it that way? Wouldn't that make it easier?
So leave the two inside?
Yeah.
Like this two?
Yeah.
And then entire denominator is our thing, and then we have DU, yeah. Uh, I mean, yeah, you, yeah. So it would be U equals one minus E to the negative two, oops, negative two X. DU equals two E to the negative two X. Um, and then that would be a DX, obviously. Yep, and so then that would be. Yeah, that would be good, for sure. That would, that would work. Uh, let's see, is this gonna add much more complication for me? Let's see, how do I integrate that now? I can, um, the bottom is a difference of squares. I'd have to do, yeah, actually, this, that would be a lot faster. Be a lot faster. To do it like that, yeah. That would be good. But I'm this far in, so, uh, I think it's also a good time to practice partial fraction decomposition. So I think that would be good. Oh, no, I don't have to do that, because this is a, never mind, because that is a quadratic on the one. Yeah, okay, so it's just gonna be a couple extra steps. Um, now it's gonna be T equals one minus U squared. DT equals negative two U DU. Um, that's, I have that on the top, right? So this is going to be one over T. Uh, integral of one over T DT. Which is lawn absolute value T plus C. Which is lawn, lawn absolute value one minus U squared plus C. Which is lawn absolute value one minus E to the negative two X plus C. Which is what you have got, would have gotten if you just did the U sub, one U sub here. Two U subs. Okay, so there's U one. We figured out U one. Oh, no plus C, because we're differential equations, whatever. Just looking for, uh, a solution here. But that's, it's fine to leave. So now, uh, U two will be, so we figured out U one. Now you gotta figure out U two is gonna be the integral, or negative two times the integral. Actually, again, I'm gonna leave the negative two in. Uh, negative two over one minus E to the negative two T. So, um, this, oh, let me see. No, actually, this is not.
This one was the one I said was, you can get stuck on this spot here.
Yeah, so. Um, I know what to do, but li- like, let's hear from the, hear from the chat, any ideas? Some community involvement here. Any ideas of how do we integrate this?
Actually, gotta run. Bye, guys.
Okay, bye, bye, Joshua, see ya.
Not a convenient.
How convenient. Ducking out right when the question gets hard.
No, actually, you need to see this one, dude. I just need to go down to these real quick.
Okay, well, you can, yeah, but let's see. Does the, anyone else in the chat have any suggestions of how to deal with this?
Um, I'm gonna take a gander.
Take a gander, let's hear it.
Uh, it, would you just do one, uh, multiply by one, one plus E to the negative two X, uh, over one plus E to the negative two X? The conjugate.
Let's see the, okay, let's see.
I don't know if that helps, though.
Let's see.
Maybe easier to just, uh, do one minus one over E to the two X in the denominator?
Uh, one, sorry, say it again, what was it?
Uh, wouldn't it be easier to just do one minus one over E to the two X and then just, uh, like, do the common denominator?
And then simplify it and see what happens there? Yeah, we could try that as well. Let's see what happens with this con- conjugate, and let's see what happens with that suggestion with the fraction, and then we'll see where we go. Um, so, uh, this would turn into, uh, just one plus E to the negative two X over. Uh, and this is the difference of squares, right? Well, it's the opposite of difference of squares. So it's gonna factor into one squared. Minus E to the negative two X squared, which is E to the negative four X. And, um, could we do anything here? Is this any simpler? Um. No, that looks more complicated. Unless, unless it's, it's something's apparent that I'm just not seeing.
Wait, are we making whole U sub as, oh, wait, but they're different. Is that a plus in the numerator?
That's a plus, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, not this one. Yeah.
Uh, do you think you can, like, simplify the E to the negative two X as like a fraction and then?
Yeah.
Have a common denominator, and then you can bring up the E to the two over X?
Yeah, so someone else suggested that too, so two people suggesting this, let's, let's see if that works. So I'm gonna integrate. One over one minus E, uh, one over E to the two X, right? Common denominator, that's E to the two X over E to the two X, so that's going to be DX, right? So it's gonna be. One over E to the two X minus one over E to the two X, right? Which is going to be E to the two X over E to the two X minus one. Okay, so let's see, can we integrate that simpler? So the integral of E to the two X over E to the two X minus one. Uh, yeah, actually, that does work. That, that'll, that, that will go, you know, bring us to the end, so. Um, we can definitely try that, uh, because now I can take a U sub. Uh, let's see what it'd be. Yeah, I can take a U sub, uh, U equals E to the X. And I would have U over U squared minus one, which would be a, uh, just a U sub again. Yeah, okay, so we can do that. Um, okay, let's, let's go for it. Yeah?
Okay, um, I, I just don't understand exactly what was done, uh, in the denominator.
Yeah.
Did we divide the, every, each term by E to the power of two X?
Yeah, let, let me show you what, what went on here. So we have one over one minus E to the, to the negative two X. Now, I'm ignoring all the integral stuff for a second, just this, this, the expressions. This is equal to one over one minus one over E to the two X. Comfortable with that?
Yes, okay.
So, common denominator, I need the, for these terms to add down here, they need to be the same thing. So one is the same thing as E to the two X. Over E to the two X. Minus one over E to the two X. So it's gonna be one over. Now, the same denominator, they can add. Alright, and now one over a fraction is just the flipped over fraction. So we get that. Make sense?
Yeah, okay, that's interesting.
Right, so that's our whole process. Right, so that's our whole process. I'll leave that here. Um, how should, where should I put it? A little bit. Lettered. Do this. I will move it down here, but it is, you know, I'll just leave that as, as a little side note. Um, so now that we know we can turn this into the integral of negative two, uh, negative two times the integral of e to the two x over, what was it? E to the two x minus one. DX, I can just make the u sub, u equals e to the x. Du equals e to the x dx. Right? And so we get left outside, so negative two, now e to the x dx, one of the e to the x's gets, gets, you know, taken by this du, so it's gonna be just a u up there. Over u squared minus one d. Right, so it's not u squared up here, even though it's e squared, because one of the e to the x's gets taken up by here. Because du is e to the x dx. Okay, now I'm just gonna make a t substitution, so t equals u squared minus one, dt equals two u du. Um, so the two can get taken up there, so it's gonna be negative integral of, um, uh. One over t dt. Which is equal to lawn absolute value t, negative lawn absolute value t. Which is equal to negative lawn absolute value u squared minus one, which is equal to negative lawn absolute value. E to the two x.
And then, and the negative two that was outside is gone, because there was the two from the denominator, because of the fact that it, yeah.
The negative is still there, but the two.
Yeah, yeah.
I did it a slightly different way and I got a different result, but I don't know if both of our results are actually equate to the same thing.
Sometimes that happens, yeah.
Because what you can do as well, I mean, the method of like dividing by the greatest one is, I think that's the better way to do it, but you can also do it where you just multiply in the numerator. You go plus e to the nega- or is it e to the two x, e to the negative, plus e to the negative two x, minus e to the negative two x. So you're, you're not adding anything, you're just doing plus minus, but then you're, you end up with the denominator, so you can. You basically get either the negative two x over one minus e to the negative two x. And then outside you get plus one.
Yeah.
That, but the plus one would then give you a second term, you have one term, which is why I'm a little bit confused. But I think it, they might equal the same.
It is the same integral. Probably what happens is, remember lawns can combine in a certain way, right? So maybe those lawns combine, you know, like.
No, 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 there's not, there's only one lawn. It's just, you, you're, you end up with, um, an x, like, a linear, uh, term. At the end, because you have plus one at the end, yeah.
That's true. Not sure, but both probably are the same. Um. Yeah, both probably are the same, that's all I can say. I don't know.
You go over why it's not u squared?
Uh, yeah, why it's not u squared up here?
Substitution, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because, uh, what is, what is dt? Or, uh, sorry, what is du? Du is e to the x dx, right? So that e to the x dx has to come from somewhere. So here we have e to the x, e to the x. And there is our e to the x.
Oh, okay, okay, you separated those.
Right, and all that's left is a, is the x up there. And so it's just a u, not a u squared.
Okay, this is an off-topic question about exactness, so you know how our last example was equal to zero? What if it's equal to a constant or even a g of x, like a function of x?
Um.
That wouldn't, that's not proper for, or not g of x, actually, just equal to a constant.
I think we don't know how to deal with that, let's take a look, um.
Just wanna make sure, just so I'm not like.
Pretty sure we don't.
Because I, yeah, okay, because I thought so as well.
No, that's non-homogeneous then, right? That becomes non-homogeneous.
That's non-homogeneous, and then that won't, yeah, we can't, see it's equal.
Like variation of parameter, Laplace or whatever.
Well, we, yeah, we haven't even begun to start to deal with that, right? I guess you'd put it in linear form, and then, yeah, but again, we haven't even, we haven't even started to deal with.
Okay.
Non-linear stuff like that, so yeah. Honestly, I don't really know why these two were at the beginning of the course, they're so different than everything else. Um, so I, yeah, it's a little, a little bit strange, just like.
I feel like there's throwaways from M T S two forty, but.
I guess so, like separable is, and then exact is completely new, so it's weird that they just like throw that in at the start. But, um, I don't know, anyways, that's their.
Get your feet warm for a differential.
I guess so. Um, so. We have here, uh, u one and u two, we figured that out. U one. We figured out here was lawn absolute value one minus e to the negative two x. U two is lawn absolute value, negative lawn absolute value e to the two x. Minus one, and so finally, I can write my y solution, which is yc plus yp. As, uh, this was c one e to the, let's see. C one e to the x. Plus c two e to the negative x, plus yp, yp is u one times y one. So, uh, lawn absolute value one minus e to the negative two x, that's u one, times y one. Here, so e to the x. But, um, plus u two, so negative lawn absolute value e to the two x minus one. Um, times, uh, y two, which is e to the negative x. And there we go. That is our general form of these solutions. The solution to this. To, no, to this differential. Using variation of. So, any questions? Happy to answer. So if someone asks in the chat, are we given an exact differential equations? Will they always be in the form like that? Uh, technically, not necessarily. So if you were given a exact differen- if you're given a linear, uh, not linear, so dy by dy, dy by dx, uh, in the form, you know, p of x, y, I'll call it m. M of x, y over n of x, y. Okay, so if you were given a first order differential equation like this, right, so it's dy by dx, and then you can't separate it, you know, if you were, if this was separable, then you could deal with that, right? But it's not separable, um, so, uh, you can turn this into an ex- you know, turn this into the form of an exact differential equation. If it is, um, if it's like. What can I say? If it is, ends up being exact, right? But you can write it in the form that you wanna write it in, which would be, um, n. X, y, dy. Uh, equals m, x, y, the x. And then particularly in the form, it'd be m, x, y, dy minus n, x, y. Sorry, it's supposed to be an x there. Uh, dy equals zero, and so now it's in the form of an exact differential equation. It didn't start in the form, but it ended up in the form, so now you could check if it's exact. Do the exactness check.
Could you just go to t sub?
Sorry.
T substitution, when you sup- the step after u sub?
Oh, step after the u sub, uh, here?
Yep.
Yep. Just wanna see it or asking what I did or?
No, I just wanna see it.
Just wanna see it, okay, sounds. Any other questions?
Could you scroll down to the answer, just needed to take a screenshot?
Sure, so, answers are there.
Thank you.
No problem.
Have we done reduction of order practice or no?
Um, I don't know if we've actually done any together.
Reduction of order is essentially just that equation, right, that we're given, where it's like y two equals y one integral and all that.
Yeah, so.
Because there's only one method to really solve, uh, reduction of order, right?
Yeah.
And it's just that equation.
It's not on the exam, is it?
Uh, it's in the sections, it's in one of these, it's in five point. Five point. Uh, five point one, I guess?
No, it's five point six.
Reduction of order is five point six?
Hi, like, that's, I was surprised too, but that's what it says.
Uh, wait, let me see. Reduction order, five point six, yeah, I don't know, we didn't really do five point six, we just kinda threw it in somewhere else, but yeah, there's a formula for reduction of order, is there gonna, are they gonna show the formula? This textbook's so weird, I really don't like this textbook. Um.
Is textbooks wrong like fifty percent of the time?
Is it?
Answers on the back are just wrong, or they're like not lined up correctly. I don't know if they're like referencing a different question.
Different question, yeah, possibly.
They use a different e sometimes. Sorry, like, you know the sign, what's it, the beta, sometimes the beta is different, you know, beta is the same for triangles. Sometimes beta is different.
Oh, really? Yeah, I don't know. Uh, yeah, five point six is excluded from the sections listed on the covering topics, but, uh, we do reduction of order. Unless I'm remembering reduction of order as something else. Reduction of order is.
Reduction of order is you're given one equation, you have to find the other.
Right? I even put it in here, the previous thing is also called production of order. So, there, I called it Abel's theorem, because that's what I think it's called. Yeah, so essentially, if you have a linear differential equation, a second order one, uh, it has two solution families. Um, so if you, if you know one of them, you can find the other one by doing this whole thing. Why, that's another discussion for now.
Um, also, could we try, uh, eight point one questions, because I still don't know how would, how they would ask a question like that on a test?
For sure, yeah.
They just, they just make you do the integral, the big lengthy formula?
Yeah.
That's all it is. Oh, okay, okay.
Let's take a look at a, a, a quick practice on, uh. Uh, undetermined coefficients, and by quick, I mean a hard one, so not, not good, not, not quick. Um, but let's take a look, five point five practice, as you suggested to me. I will give it a shot from number thirteen, so we have this whole one here, it's a, it's a quite a one, so we will.
Oh, God, it's, oh, no.
It is, it is quite something, so we will give this a shot, and then we will do Laplace. So, um, here it is. So the question is, of course, find the solution to this differential equation. It is second order linear, most coefficients, non-homogeneous. So, we will try to figure this out using our table method. To do that, we need the table. So I will open the table. Can't tell, like, I think I'll use my, the table from my notes, but. I don't know, sometimes I feel like I should also have both tables, so I'm gonna have both tables up. Not that I'm really missing anything from my table, I just feel like maybe there's a reason they wrote it the way they wrote it. I don't, anyways, um, I gotta find, uh, undetermined coefficients, and there is our table, so I'll just, screenshot of that. And so our two tables to help us out here are this, but before we can even do that, let's find the, uh, complementary solution to this, to the, keep saying system. Um, differential equation, so we do m squared plus three m plus two equals zero.
What's it say after the cos?
Oh, sorry. See now?
I got you.
Okay, there you go, okay. Okay, so, um, m squared plus three m plus two equals zero, just characteristic equation, so, um, I solved this for one and two, so m plus one. M plus two equals zero. So, uh, m equals negative one, negative two, okay, so we have distinct real roots, so our yc is c one e to the negative x plus c two e to the negative two x. Now, that I have this, I gotta figure out what yp is, our particular solution. So, uh, I'm going to make a guess. I will use superposition for this. So, since we have two separate terms, I can make two separate guesses, uh, figure out their coefficients, and then add those guesses together. So yp one, well, so yp will be yp one plus yp two. And now yp one is going to take into account that, that thing right there. Right, so it is a quadratic times the cosine, so let's see if we see quadratic times the cosine. Um, I don't have that here, but I think I have it here, yeah, quadratic. So number eleven, I guess I need to add more to this table, I'm realizing, yeah, there's reasons they had extra stuff, anyways. Um. Quadratic times a trigonometric is quadratic, trigonometric, quadratic, trigonometric, that's our guess, right? So we have ax squared plus bx plus c times, well, it was a, it's a, it's a cosine there for us, right? It doesn't really matter, it's just, I'll put a cosine first, uh, cosine x plus ex squared plus fx plus g. Sin of x. So, that will be our first guess, and yp two, our second solution, is gonna deal with that term there. It's gonna be a linear term times our sinusoid, our, our, quite a trigonometric term. So, um, let's see where we have that. Uh, nowhere in partic- nowhere in particular, but, uh, it's okay, because we can just, you just see what happens, right? So you do the, the type of term, so here it's a quadratic term, times the trig function, and you get a general quadratic times cosine for x. Um, general quadratic times sine of x, so, uh, for linear, it'll be very similar, it'll be a general linear term. Um, I'll, I'll just call it differently, e, f, g, h, x plus i, uh, cosine for x. Plus, um, uh. Yeah, then I need another j, x.
Isn't it just cosine x?
Um, cosine x, oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, sorry, just because I'm reading the chart and they put for, that's why I don't like this chart, because they use specific examples there, it's really weird, I don't know why. Uh, but yeah, there you go, it, it is supposed to be that. So that's our yp one plus yp two.
We have a question.
Yeah.
Why would you do the, uh, yp two, because like, the linear terms are already included in the yp one? Like, you're redundant once you find the h, i, j, and k, anyways, like, it would be inside the first yp one.
Oh, yp one there, yeah, I know what you mean, and that's something that confuses me a lot too, yeah, there is sometimes redundancy between yp one and yp two. Um, but to my understanding, wh- what's important is that there's no redundancy between the complementary solution, that's where the actual issue is. Redundancy between the yp one and yp two is not an issue, it'll just work itself out. Uh, the coefficients will just, you'll, they'll just add together at the end or whatever. Maybe you can cancel.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think what he's saying is that we don't need a yp two, we can just work with yp one, because the elements, uh, of, uh, yp one are going to present themselves in the sine x part, right?
So you can just use.
That is possible, yeah.
If I, yeah.
Yeah, that is possible, this is something that, this is something that confuses me as well, yeah, sorry?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just saying it's way more difficult, oh my God, it's really lagging, I couldn't hear your voice, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's, it's more difficult by adding a yp two. I don't know.
No, it's easier to do yp.
No, it's easier to do with yp two, if you just do it in one yp, it's gonna get really difficult when you expand.
Yeah, so s- so split this up into two separate steps here, yeah. I see the point, though, that there is redundancy between yp one and yp two, but that's just gonna add more time to our, uh, solving. Uh, but it won't get you the wrong answer, it'll get you the right answer still, to my understanding. This is, again, this is something that's a little bit, a little bit confusing for me too.
Isn't the whole point of superpositions? Is that there's no redundancy, because it's just addition?
Um.
Like, it's, it's part of the same term technically, it's still part of the same yp, it's just being split up.
They're just being added together.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if it's the point that there's no redundancy, there's no redundancy between, again, between the complementary solution, that would cause a big issue if you had.
Yeah.
Redundancy between the complementary solution, and there is none of that here, right? None of these terms are just scalar multiples of e to the x or, or e to, e to the negative x or e to the negative two x.
Yeah.
There's no redundancy there. Um, but yeah, redundancy between the yps.
Don't matter, right?
It, to my understanding, they don't matter, yeah. I would say they don't matter, yeah. Um. We have, how many variables? Yeah, four there and then. There. Yeah, okay, let's go ahead like this and see how it goes. If we have time, we can do both ways, and just without a yp two, I think that will work, but let's just do it this way, just because I'm confident that this will work. And then I'm not so confident that it'll work if I just remove this. Um, so let's just first do it the way that I'm confident it'll work, and then we'll try again after. Um, we'll take two, so our differential equation is y double prime plus three y prime. Um, plus two y, uh, equals, uh, so twelve. Plus twenty x plus ten x squared. Sin, nope, cosine x. Uh, plus eight x. Sin x. Great, so for, um, yp one. We just look at this differential equation. Two y equals, uh, I'm gonna. Two y equals uh, I'm gonna multiply the cosine in, so it's gonna be twelve cosine x. Plus twenty x cosine x. Plus ten x squared cosine x. Um, and now I substitute in y p one, which is that whole thing, so I gotta figure out, it's gonna be a little bit of a process. Uh, it's gonna be a lot of writing, so uh, y p one. Here, so now y p one prime is the derivative of the first thing. Two a x plus b times the second thing. Plus the first thing. Plus b x, c, times the derivative of the second thing, which is negative sine x. Plus chain rule, uh, product rule, derivative of the first thing. Two e x plus f times the second thing. Sine x plus the first thing, e to the x, e x squared plus, difficult to say capital E, without saying e to the. Uh, f x plus g, well, I never have to write these letters, uh, times, well, I'm doing math. Derivative of sine is cosine, so we get that. Y, anything canceled? Probably not. Y p one double prime is, again, derivative of the first thing, two a times the second thing, cosine x plus the first thing. Two a x plus b, which plus b, times the derivative of the second thing, which is negative sine, negative there. Chain rule again, derivative of the, I keep saying chain rule, product rule again, derivative of the first thing. Uh, two a x plus b times the second thing. Uh, plus, but the negative distributes in. Um, the first thing, a x squared plus b x plus c times the derivative of the second thing, cosine x. Product rule again, two e. Sin x plus two e x plus f. Cosine x. And then derivative of the first thing is two e x plus f. Cosine x plus e x squared plus f x plus g. Times the derivative of cosine, which is negative sine. There you go. Now that I know what y p one, y p one prime is and y p one double prime is, I can substitute that into my equation. So I get, oh, it's probably some stuff cancels here, actually. Um, two a cos x, is there a negative two a cos x? Negative two a, no, it looks like I don't have that. Um, oh no, I gotta distribute. Okay, I'm just gonna put everything in and then things will distribute nicely. Should I distribute now? Yeah, I'll distribute now. That'll be easier. Okay, I'm going to rewrite y p one, but distribute everything in. Uh, be a little bit more writing for a second and then it'll be less writing immediately when I see it. So y p one equals a x squared cosine x plus b x. Cosine x plus c cosine x plus e x squared. Sin x plus f x sine x plus g. Sin x, okay, there is y p one. Y p two. No, I, y p one, sorry, not y p two, y p one prime distributed. Um, you know what, I'll, I'll remove that, just because I've dealt with it. Is going to be y p one prime is two a x cosine x plus b cosine x minus a x squared. Sin x minus b x sine x minus c sine x. Plus two e x sine x. Plus f sine x plus e x squared. Cosine x plus f x sine x plus g sine x. Great, there is y p one prime simplified, well. Distributed. And now, y p one double prime. Um, so this is going to be y p one double prime equals two a cosine x minus two a x. Sin x plus uh, minus b sine x. Minus two a x sine x. Minus b sine x minus a x squared cosine x. Minus b x cosine x minus c cosine x. Um, plus two e sine x plus two e x. Cosine x plus f cosine x plus two e x. Cosine x plus f cosine x minus e x squared. Sin x minus f x. Sin x minus g. Sin x, great.
This question will literally take you all of your one hundred minutes.
Yeah, I was about to.
If, if you factor out the cosine and sign and just write the a, it would maybe a lot faster.
If I. Factor out the cosine.
Yeah, all the cos and all the sign.
I just, yeah, okay, that would be faster than, than doing this and then canceling them like this, yeah. Factor them into. Separate groups and then cancel like terms inside, yeah, it, yeah, less writing for sure, that's true. But essentially you get the same step as right now, which is just that things will cancel, so let's just see what cancels, I don't know, let's see if we can find anything. Um, so negative b x, do I have a positive b x? Um, I have an a x, I know things up here will cancel. Do things, I thought things would cancel inside the actual thing. Negative b, so I have two of these guys, so those combine at least, at least. Um, these also combine. That's good. Two a cos, do I just have an a cos? Uh, oh no, but I have just cos's. I don't have to read the same letter. Those, I shouldn't use that color. Those add together. Anything else with cos with just coefficients? Yeah, so I'm, I'm seeing now that it would have been easier to just uh, factor out all the cos's and everything like that. But that's okay. Um, surprise, less isn't canceling. That's fine, uh, x sine. This color, so x sine is there. X. Constant sine is red. Constant sign there. Um, constant sign there. So all this can start to combine a little bit, so we get y p one double prime. Equals, okay, so, so the blue can add together, so two a minus c plus f plus f. Yeah, I'm just gonna do what you said. That's gonna make it, it's just gonna make life easier at this point, so. I'm just gonna do the, get all the like terms together. So instead of. Um, get all the cosine terms in one place, so cosine x times, and now just all the cosine terms, two a. No, 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 no. There's a negative a x squared minus b x minus c a plus two e x. Um, plus f plus two e x plus f. Um, and then that's all my cosine terms. And then plus my sine terms. Which are all the other terms, so negative two a x minus b minus two a x minus b. Um, plus two e plus two. Nope, sorry, plus two e um, minus e x squared minus f x minus g. That is the easier way to do it, because now you can, you can see what, what the terms are, the quadratic terms and all that, right? So y p one. Double prime, um, let's see, what combines in here? So the x terms can combine and then I can distribute the cos back in. Yeah, it's probably worth it to distribute the cos back in. Once I can combine everything. I'm just thinking about, I, I know I'm spending a lot of time thinking about the fastest way of doing it, which, which just wastes more time. But uh, I'm trying to think, if you're on the test and you wanna do this fast, what is the best way to do it?
No way he gives us for the test.
No?
This question for the test?
Yeah, here's the thing, man, honestly, like, I don't even think it's worth solving, because, you know, it's, it's the, I don't think we're gonna have something this complex.
Don't worry.
It's like, if you're down, if you want to, you can move on to the next question, really, you don't have to solve this.
I know people are having Horowitz flashbacks, don't worry, Chalkim is not Horowitz. I promise you, Chalkim is not Horowitz.
Well, what do you guys think? Should I move to Laplace and do Laplace?
I think you should move on, in my opinion.
Even the first question in this section is this long. I'm not lying, like, all of the questions are this long. I don't think it's worth.
They're, they are very, very long questions to do, especially like, if this gets at all complicated over here. Um, so I guess it really is worth it to try to consider that as a redundancy. Because it is a redundancy. Um, the reason it's a redundancy is because you already, like, think about this distributing in, right? The cos i and sine k, that's already accounted for here, right? That's sine g and si- cosine c. Those are all just random constants, it doesn't matter. Um, and so, you know, if you remember, these are being added together at the end, so those terms would, you'd be able to factor a cosine out of them.
Okay, so the same way, you don't wanna look for redundancies between the particular solution and the complementary solution. You do the same thing between your first particular solution and your second.
Yeah, and so this is all redundancy. The second one's all redundant. Actually, why, our entire guess is fine to be, to be that.
Wow, okay.
And then we wouldn't have to deal with any y p two. You'd still have to do all this.
Yeah.
This, still do all that, but yeah. Um, so, yeah.
Still found another method on textbook, so like, for the quadratic part, they just take u x as the whole quadratic. And then they differentiate u, and at the end, you have to do the um, the second order derivative twice to find the u, and then you can just plug everything back in.
Is a u x, is, yeah, yeah, I see what you mean.
Instead of a x squared plus b x plus c.
I've never seen it like that, yeah. I've never seen it like that, but uh, that vaguely makes sense.
I saw it in textbook.
Yeah, interesting, but textbook's weird. The, like, the assigned textbook, this elementary differential equation, da, 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 da.
When the textbook uses a method, they didn't teach you in class to solve a question.
Okay, someone else had another question there. Uh, what was the, the question?
I just wanted to ask, if we got, if we got a situation where we have a question like this and they gave us initial value problem, where do we even start with that? Do we do it with the characteristic equation or do we do it after we find y p as well?
You gotta find y p. Yeah, you got it, you, you do have to find y p. So you can, you do it here, and if it was homogeneous, then of course you can do it here, but if it's not homogeneous, you do have to find y p first, because this stuff does affect the other numbers. I had this exact question today and it turns out you do have to, you do have to do that. So yeah, you, you'd have to do that. And so once you do that, once you figure out what y c and y p is, and you have your nice general y, which is, you know, y c plus y p, right? This has two constants, c one and c two in it, right? So you need two values. You're gonna need y of x naught equals um, y naught. Right, and y prime of x naught equals uh, well. Can't call them both y naught, so uh, I don't know, I'll call it a and b, equals a and b. So you have some, just, just these facts up here, right? The derivative and the function at some point. You make two equations, so you find another equation, you, you get, you get this, y prime equals y c prime plus y p prime. And you substitute the values into these equations. And you can make a system to solve for c one and c two. Does that make sense? As a solution? If it doesn't, tell me.
That makes sense.
Yeah, good. Okay, no problem, yeah. Um, okay, so for the sake of. Our sanity. Let's move on to Laplace trans. I think that'll be a little bit nicer. Um, so let's see, let's see um, what we can do. For Laplace. Now, there's a lot of questions in Laplace that are weird. And I can talk about them, but I don't know how relevant they will be. A little bit difficult to decide. I think we should do a uh, Laplace transform like this of a, of a piecewise function. Pretty sure that's gonna be on the test, if I'm being honest, Laplace of a piecewise function. That seems, that seems like a good question that they would put. Um, so they did say to do five a and c, so I think we should try that out. Um, and then they said, uh, well, three is three. Um, one as well, one is just find the Laplace of all these functions, of course, don't do this, don't do the hyperbolic ones. Um, and then seventeen and eighteen, which uh, we don't, we, we don't have to worry about for the test. Uh, let's try five a and c.
By the way, um, on the midterm, are we allowed to use um, the Laplace transforms for basic functions to solve like, the functions that are?
Table, if it says, if it says find a Laplace transform by definition, no, you have to show all your work for that. If it doesn't say by definition, probably could use the table. Um, I don't know if it's like, I don't know particularly if you're allowed, like. I don't know, actually. If you remember the table and it doesn't say by definition, of course. Otherwise, I'm not quite. If it says by definition, you have to do it by definition. Uh, some people are asking if I'm posting stuff, yeah, video, I posted in PDF, I posted. So let's find the Laplace transform of these two uh, functions and then. Yeah, that's, that's that. So. F of t is equal to, I'm just gonna write it first, so it is a piecewise function. Uh, it is e to the negative t from zero to one and e to the negative two t when t is bigger than or equal to, to one. So the Laplace of f of t. Right, is the integral from zero to infinity of f of t, uh, sorry, e to the negative s t uh, times f of t. D t. Um, but we're gonna have a little bit of issues here, right, working this out, so it's, it's because of the whole piecewise thing. Um, because f changes what function it is at some point, so the way to get around this. Is just split your integral up, and so it's just the integral from zero to one of e to the negative s t times f of t. T plus the integral from one to infinity of e to the negative s t, f of t. T, and the reason this is actually helpful is because from zero to one, f of t is a, is a particular function, not a piecewise function, it's, it's just a function. E to the negative t, so I can just replace this as, as the integral from zero to one, e to the negative s t, e to the negative t. Right, d t plus the integral from one to infinity of e to the negative s t, f of t, well, from, from z- one to infinity, it is also a function. It's a particular function, not a piecewise function, e to the negative two t. So now we gotta figure out all these things, so um, well, I will say this is the integral from zero to one of e to the negative s plus one t. verify that that is right for you, but that makes sense. Good, um, d t. Plus the integral from one to infinity of e to the negative s plus two. Okay, so we have this, we have all our uh, integrals here, so now we want to figure out uh, what it, you know, just evaluate these indefinite integrals. And then uh, figure out. What limits for this one we need. So I usually don't do the whole limit thing, like, show the limit with a variable, it's better to just leave it as infinity, pretend like infinity is a number for a second. Um, and then uh, we have here, okay, so let's, let's give this a try. It's going to be one over negative s plus one, e to the negative s plus one t. Okay, evaluated from zero to one. So again, this is just the whole thing of f, if, if, you know, this is just e to the x, but we have a constant in front, negative s plus one. And so from here, we can just see that the derivative of this would be that, so that is definitely our integral. And now we can see here, the same thing is gonna happen, right? We just have one over negative s plus two. E to the negative s plus two t, just in brackets like that. So it's, it's a very similar thing, um, evaluated from one to infinity. Okay, so we just have that whole thing, uh, just to be clear, that is the thing being evaluated from one to infinity, this is being evaluated from zero to one.
For, for your first uh. For your first uh, term, uh, why is there no bracket around the s plus t?
Uh.
Is there a reason? And then there's a bracket on your second term.
Oh, first term, there's no bracket around s. Oh, yeah, this, this, yeah, that should be negative bracket s plus one.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be negative bracket s plus two there. Yeah. Okay, so that will be a constant. That'll just be something, well, function of s, but constant. That. Um, and so then here, we have just a um, uh, a different, like, this is gonna be a limit with some sort of infinity there. So let's take a look at what that's gonna be. So this one here is just a one, so we just substitute one in there. So it's one over negative s plus one, e to the negative s plus one times one. Okay, minus, but that minus and the minus here will cancel, it's gonna be plus, one over s plus one. Okay, e to the zero, right? But e to the zero is just going to be one, so that's it. Plus, and now this whole thing, evaluate this at infinity. Well, if s plus two is positive, in other words, s is greater than negative two. Then this will go to zero, right? E to the negative infinity will um, uh, will be zero. And so substituting infinity in, we get e to, well, this whole thing goes to zero, so the whole term is just zero. So it's a zero, minus evaluated at one, which is, well, the minus and the minus again will cancel to a plus, one over s plus two. E to the negative s plus two times one, right? Which is just. So a lot of just like, you just have to think about a bunch of things. I know that's, that sums up like a lot of math, but uh, particularly here, there's just like a lot of things to think about. You know, integration, uh, evaluating at limits. Uh, evaluating when one of the limits is infinity, right? A lot of just little things that are not super hard on their own, but like a bunch of things combined can get a little trick.
You just gotta get through, man, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's really, that's really the advice. Um, so.
The one over s plus one.
This one? Yeah, evaluate, evaluate this at zero when t equals zero.
Yeah, I just thought that, wait, wouldn't like e to the negative zero become like one over e to the? Oh wait, nevermind.
Yeah, one over e to the zero, sure. And then that would be one over one, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. Um, so I'm going to rewrite this a little bit as one over s plus two, e to the negative s plus two. Uh, no t's anymore, right? Because it's the function of s, the Laplace is always just a function of s. Uh, minus one over s plus one, e to the negative s plus one, uh, plus one over s plus one. There is our Laplace. Maybe there's some way to combine it. Yeah, I mean, you can combine here, right? So that you can do um, uh, e to the negative s plus, what was it now? S plus one.
Plus one.
And this was, so, over s plus one, e to the negative s plus one and uh, plus one. There we go. So we can see that that is our Laplace of our uh, f of t. So again, you just break it up into the interval, do the Laplace separately. Any questions?
Yeah, um, I want to ask, so e raised to the power of negative infinity, I would still equal zero, whereas e raised to the power of infinity would still equal zero.
E to the infinity is infinite.
Or sorry, yeah, yeah, oh, okay.
Right? So e to the t.
I was referring to one.
As t goes to infinity is equal to infinity. E to the t as t goes to negative infinity, well, if you just look at the graph, right? Just take a look at. The x. There it is. As you go to infinity, this goes to infinity. And then as you go to negative infinity, this goes to negative, this goes to zero.
Okay, okay, we're good. Thank you.
Good. Okay, let's try five c and then that probably will be the last question unless people have more specific questions I can ask, but probably our last. And I'll go through. Um, and yeah, so let's take a look. Um, pretty similar, not quite same, but pretty similar. So we can see here that this, we're looking for the Laplace of f of t. Which is the integral from zero to infinity of e to the negative s t f of t d t. Um, and then we have um, that the function itself breaks between one and, well, between, at one, breaks at one, right? So we want the integral from zero to one of e to the negative s t. And from zero to one, what is the function? It's just t, right? Plus the integral from one to infinity of e to the negative s t f of t, but from one to infinity, the function is just one, so I can just write d t. So again, this will just be the process of, uh, you know, negative one over s, e to the negative s t evaluated from zero to one. Plus, uh, uh, well, so minus, cause negative one over s, e to the negative s t, uh, evaluated from one to infinity. Uh, that's it. So there we go. Evaluated one is negative one over s, e to the negative s. Minus at zero, but the minus negative will cancel to a positive, one over s.
Did you forget the t?
I did forget the t, yeah. Uh, I did forget the t.
First term.
So that is not the right term. That is right for this term. This term is correct. I did forget the t. Thank you. So leave that to the side. This is a, um, integration by parts question. So u equals t. D v equals e to the negative s t d t. D u equals d t, v equals negative one over s e to the negative s t. So anybody stop me if you have any questions. I know I go fast in some parts, so just tell me if you have questions and I can. So um, let's try uh, this, so it's gonna be uh, u v. So negative t over s, e to the negative s t evaluated from zero to one. Okay, minus the integral of v d u. So v has a negative, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna get it there. Uh, one over s, e to the negative s t, uh, d u is d t. One over s can leave. Uh, and this is the integral from zero to one as well. We're just dealing with that. This in, this integral, this integral there. Okay, now evaluated one is gonna be negative one over s, e to the negative s. Evaluated zero is zero. It's a zero right there. Great. Plus, one over s times that integral, which is one, negative one over s, e to the negative s t. Evaluated from zero to one, minus one over s, e to the negative s t. Evaluated from one to infinity. Negative one over s, e to the negative s, plus one over s, okay, evaluated one is going to be negative one over s, e to the negative s. Evaluated zero is gonna be minus, minus negative will cancel, so one over s, e to the zero, e to the zero is one, so we get that. Now let's do this over here. So this limit here, if I put it in infinity, if s is positive, right? Um, then uh, this will be a negative exponent and so that'll go to zero. Right? So minus zero. And then I want to uh, I want to subtract at the lower bound, but the minus here will cancel, so it's going to be plus zero. Plus at one, this is gonna be one over s, e to the negative s. And that's essentially it. Uh, these two, I guess, will cancel. And then this will be just uh, one over s squared minus one over s, uh, minus e to the negative s over s squared. And then I can combine those into one thing, so it's gonna be one minus e to the negative s over s squared. And there we have our. So uh, let's see.
Sorry, um, for that last part, we have that equal sign. And you, uh, you factored out a one over s, so would there be a plus one?
Um, this equal sign?
So inside that bracket, your square bracket.
This one, yeah.
They have a common term of one over s. So you factored that out, that's how you got one over s squared, right? Or, or you factored in?
I distributed the one over s.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you distributed. Okay, okay. So uh, for these Laplace transforms, would you ever have a scenario where you have a product of functions? Like, for example, you had e to the x um, multiplied by cos x, for example. Cause I think I was talking to the prof and because I had that in one of the quizzes and he said that we haven't learned that yet. But would there be some cases where we do, or it's just the?
Yeah, if there is a case like that, you have to notice an identity, okay? There's gonna be some identity that you're supposed to use. We're not just supposed to figure out what the product of functions are, like Laplace of a product. We're not just supposed to know what that is just yet. Um, so if you have that, uh, then there's some identity you're supposed to know. To use them, to turn it into one function and then take.
And we, we, had we ever, did we go over the identities yet?
Like, like trig identities, could be like trig identities or something like that. Like, if you had like, I don't know, if you had, like, I'm looking at my board in front of me. If you had two sine theta, cosine theta, that's sine two theta. Right? That's just one function, sine two theta. You know how to take the Laplace of sine two theta by the table or by definition. And so uh, you can. So, okay. Well, um, essentially, that's all I wanted to go through, you know, just a little bit of everything, some hard questions and everything here. Um, this was a particularly meaty one. I don't know how, what else to call it. It's got a lot to it. Um, and so we can see here that uh, there's just like, some questions take a long time. That's what I'm trying to say. Some questions take a long time. Laplace transforms don't take very long, but they are tricky. Um, is that both questions? Yeah, it's both. Oh, no, there's the other question. Um, and then the variation of parameters questions, uh, just have a lot of writing to it and a lot of integrals. Sometimes the integrals get complicated, but your answers are pretty long almost always, but there we go. Uh, exact differential equations we went through and there we go. So any other questions for you guys?
I think I sent you one.
Yeah, I see, I just saw that just now. You sent me one. That's one that is uh, very strange. I guess we can go over it now. Um. I've, I've thought long about this question. So it is a quiz question from a while ago. Um, it was this and the que- the prompt is just solve. Um, which is already vague. So first of all, solve can mean, you know, find the general solution, complementary solution, find the particular solution, whatever, whatever. So um, if we were to try to go ahead and do this, right? You would say, okay, find the complementary solution first, right? A m plus b equals zero. So this is, you know, m equals negative a plus or minus a square root of a squared minus.
Sorry, it looks cut off on the, on the right side of the equation?
That's just a question mark at the end.
Just a question mark.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
For uh, a c, so it's for b all over two a. Uh, two, a as in just two, because a is, okay, confusing when you call a the second one, anyways. Um, the thing is, is that now we do not know what case this is, right? We have no idea. These are two real roots, two, um.
Wait, sorry, this was from the quiz, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
One of the quizzes. Yeah, our TA bunked this question. They just dropped it.
Yeah, because it's just.
I don't know if that meant that it was not supposed to be done or?
Yeah, I think they meant, I think they meant find the particular solution, because you can do that.
No, because the solution that was stated, like, right now I went back on Bitbelide to see the answer and it's the full-on general solution. But I was looking at the actual process.
Can I see the solution then?
Yeah, here.
How would they get a general solution without knowing?
Right, that's like, that's why I wanna see.
That they have values given. For some reason, they were given values when.
They have a and b?
They were given, yeah, exactly. So for example, uh, you see how you have your m squared plus a m plus b equals zero. Uh, for some reason, it just states the quadratic equation is r squared plus four r minus twelve equals zero. I don't know where she got those.
This is, this is what, this is what happened then. Bitbelide has a system where they put random numbers in certain places, right? But either they made a mistake or Bitbelide made a mistake and instead of putting random numbers, they just put variables there. Um, someone made a mistake. Um, so there were supposed to be random numbers that we were given, but uh, wow.
And it would just be a normal, like.
Then it would just be a normal table method question, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But because they're random numbers, they just left as variables and so you just don't know what case it is. Right? We just, we just don't know what case. So you can find the particular solution, but you cannot find the, you can find the particular solution in terms of a and b. Um, and then that's the best you can do. So that's probably what happened.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, there you go. So any other questions for me? You know, other than that, I mean, that's all I planned for today. There's our, there's our session. Uh, hopefully it was helpful. Hopefully you learned a little bit. Um, yeah, someone just said in the chat, maybe the TOs planned for a and b but forgot. Maybe someone forgot, yeah. Um, but hopefully the session was helpful. Um, hopefully you're gonna do.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I do have a question, one last one. Um, so just, there was this question that I sent you from before. It was just had to do with that one um, exactness question and then he told me that it can't be exact. So let me just send you that real quick, just so you know, just to talk one up. Uh, and then I'll send you the solution too. So apparently, yeah, it was solvable.
Yeah, we solved it, I think. Didn't we solve it? We just didn't solve it. I remember doing it. I think we just didn't solve it using one method. Because I think.
Another quiz question or something else?
It, it is a quiz question.
But the solution's already out for it. Right? So. So yeah, it's find a solution of this. And yeah, you can go through a whole process for it. And someone just asked me if I can go through the steps for exact differential equation. So I'll, I'll do this question quickly and I'll just show you why there's two ways of doing it. Um, so just to also go through that. So steps for exact differential equations, first step would be check for exactness. Well, first that would be check for check for uh, correct form, right? Which would be that. Some multi-variable function dx, multi-variable function, multi-variable, multi-variable function dy equals zero. Number two is, wow. My keyboard is probably not thinking to being weird. One note is definitely not thinking being weird here. Uh, check for exactness. Right? Which is, uh, if that's p and that's q, uh, check, does d p d y equal d q? D x. If that's true, then you can move on to step number three. Um, which is um, uh, uh, u, uh, d u, oh, use both equations. So the two equations are, uh, the partial derivative of u with respect to x is equal to p, the partial derivative of q with respect to y is, uh, partial derivative of u with respect to y is equal to q. These are two equations that are true for a function u. The u is our implicit solution to our differential equation. As we know these two facts about. So now we can uh, find u is, I guess, step number four would be uh, u equals the integral of p d x. Um, so let's figure out what that is in this particular case. That's going to be u equals uh, the integral of three x plus nine y squared d x. Um, so I can do this by uh, t sub, so t equals three x plus nine y, d t equals three d x, right? Because uh, nine y goes away. So I can just say one over three integral of t squared d uh, d t. U is one third. Um, and then that's going to be one over three t cubed plus h of y, right? So step number five kind of is remember h of y.
Adam, sorry, can you, can you show the question?
Yeah, that's.
For a sec, sorry.
Yeah.
Are you sure they're exact? Because I think it's separable. You just divide the coefficient on each side and then you solve it.
Yeah, that's true. Uh, yeah, there is a simpler way of doing this question. I, I know that. It's just that I, someone asked me to go through this steps for exactness, so for exact differential equations. So I just wanna go through all the steps and then I'm just gonna show after that. This particular question has a special way of doing it. But yeah.
Okay, okay, because like, I thought the test wouldn't work. I, I just wondered that.
Uh, would it not work? Yeah, let's see. Uh, so I, I guess I didn't actually, I didn't check for exactness. So the partial derivative of this with respect to y.
Can't be exact, it's not. Can't be exact, it's not symmetrical.
It can't be exact?
It, when it, when you get a, like a polynomial like that, if, if it's like something X plus something Y. If they're not the same, you're, you're, you can't get the same answer.
Oh.
Like, it's not possible. They're not, uh, if it's not symmetrical, it's not possible.
Sure, yeah. Then I really should have checked for exactness before I, before I did that. Yeah, so we'll see that the, yeah, I see how that's the case. Um, so the derivative of this with respect to Y is nine, so that's gonna be eighteen, so that's, that's that. And then, uh, derivative of this with respect to X is going to be two, three X plus nine Y times three. Which is six. Uh, those are not equal. This is not exact. You cannot solve this by an exact differential equation.
Wait, sir, how, how'd you find the partial derivative?
Uh, of, of which one? Of either?
The, the first one, yeah.
So that's the partial derivative with respect to, uh, Y of three X plus nine Y squared. So that's going to be, uh, that's going to be chain rule, so two times three X plus nine Y.
Oh, so you treat it, okay, okay.
The partial derivative with respect to Y of three X plus nine Y. Right, which is. Three X goes away, Y goes away, so we have eighteen.
Okay.
Makes sense?
And they're not exa- uh, exact, so at this point you would just be like.
Nothing, nothing else that you can do. Yeah, I mean, okay, so you can start, uh, rearranging, I guess. Someone said separable, is it separable?
Yeah, uh, the thing I did is just divided the coefficient, three X plus nine Y whole squared on both sides.
Yeah.
So you just get like DX plus DY equals zero.
I see. Okay, so I guess it isn't actually a dead end. I thought it would be a dead end, but I guess it's, I guess it's not. Um, so, yeah, the thing you can do here is, uh, divide everything by. Three X plus nine Y squared, in fact, divide everything like that. And you would get DX plus DY equals zero, right? Um, divide everything by DX, you get one plus DY over DX equals zero. Um, move the negative one over, DY by DX equals, um, a negative one. And so now you can just. Yeah, you can just say DY equals negative DX, integrate both sides. Y equals negative X. Plus C, and there we go. So it is separable. It's just in the form of an exact. Um, so it looks like it's gonna be an exact differential equation, but it's not exact, so you have to figure it another way, and so separable is the only other way we can solve.
Adam?
Yes.
Um, I had this exact same question on my quiz one, or like the same form. It was like the two. Squared, uh, terms in front of the things, and their solution is not like that at all. I don't really get it. It, here, I can, I can send it into the Discord chat, yeah, cuz it's like.
Yeah, I released Adam's actual solution. It's right below the question.
Oh, oh, you sent it.
Yeah, I, I, I sent it with the question.
Oh, yeah, 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 here, here. This is the solution. So let's see how they do it. FX, Y is equal to the integral of the it, the X, which is that, sure. It's H of Y.
They didn't check for exactness.
Yeah. They just went ahead and did it.
That first integral even make that much sense? Like, in my head, I thought I'd like expand that square. And then integrate each term separately, and it wouldn't come out to like that power rule, like as a process one.
It, it actually would, but I know what you did. I did that too. First time I did it, I didn't use it, use it, but it's actually just a U substitution. U equals three X plus nine Y. Um, and then you, you do actually get that, but, uh, you'll see that it, you'll, if you do it. How you said, and then do every, like, this, uh, foil, that binomial, then, uh, everything will collect and factor into that cubic thing.
I see.
But, yeah, so it looks like they just went for the whole. It's confusingly written, so I can't really tell exactly what part they're at, but by F they mean U. And, yeah, by F they mean U, and then everything else is fine. Yeah, so they just said.
It probably just assumes that the equation that the person's being given is exact. Like, it was just, you know, it just, it knows that this isn't supposed to be an exact equation, so it just solves it assuming it is.
Yeah.
Without checking.
So, uh, another issue on the test, two issues. Uh, that this is not exact, so you could still solve it, but it is not that solution. Uh, that is not the correct answer to this differential equation. You can try to substitute that in and you'll see that that is not true. And, but, um, you can see that, uh, we can solve it.
So are we done for today?
We are pretty much done for today, yeah. Yeah, how about I just talk, I'll, I'll go through the steps for this exact one again, just cuz someone asked, and then. But that, and then, and then we'll. So just quickly, I'll go through the steps of how to solve an exact. So identify your P of X, Q of X. Check if P, uh, partial derivative of P with respect to Y is equal to the partial derivative of Q with respect to X. If that's true. Then you have an exact differential equation. Let me just restart one note, it's annoying. There you go. Um, so you have an exact differential equation. What that means is that there is some function. You with these properties. We're gonna use those properties, okay, which is, I'm going to essentially say U is the integral of P, of P of X. Um, and then I'd figure that all out, and you just have to remember that at the end we should have H of Y, because our constant term is a function of Y. Integrate P to get that. And then we use this, this next equation, which is the other equation that I have here. And I can actually find both the left and the right side independently, I'd not as an equation, right? I don't need to do this whole process again. The partial derivative of U with respect to Y, I can just do that to this. I get that. Q I know. Solve for H of Y. Substitute that in. There's our solution. So hopefully that was. Just review there, how to do that. Any other questions? If not. We're done, but any more questions, let me know. We can.
Yeah, so just one last thing. It's not about a specific question, but, um, it has to do with. Having like, here, let me find it, specific one. Okay, so you say you have like, uh, like, it's like an undetermined coefficient meth, uh, method, like you're using, um. Okay, so, so you write this down. You have Y double prime minus four, uh, Y prime, plus four Y.
Why double? Why?
Yeah, Y double prime minus four Y prime.
Being weird, deleting as I write, that's strange. Oh, one note. And then you could work on, now it's all here. Y double prime, yes.
Minus four Y prime, plus four Y. Equals T cubed. E raised to the power of two T.
T cubed, E raised to the power of two T.
Yeah, and then you're just given initial values, so like, for example, like you have Y, uh, that, like, Y. Y is equal to zero, or, yeah, Y is equal to zero when X is equal to zero. And Y prime's equal to zero when X is equal to zero, so you have two initial things, so this case, we haven't covered yet, right?
We have, we have covered this. We have covered this, so you would solve this by, first of all, solving the complementary solution, right? And then YP, YP you would figure out by your, uh, guess, and so your guess would be. AT cubed plus BT squared plus CT plus D. Times E to the two T. That would be your guess for YP. Go through the whole process of figuring out what A, B, C, and D are. And then from there, you're going to have, you're gonna have, you're gonna know both of these things. No con, no unknowns in here, but you're gonna have two unknowns in here. So you just, you just apply this equation to that, and then you apply. This equation to that.
So the T and the X is.
There's no X's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's Y as a function of T. Y, Y as a function of T.
Oh, the T just threw me off. I thought, for a second, I thought there was X and Ts.
No, no, it's just, if it's, if there was X and Ts, yeah, there's an issue there. That's, that's the, that's something out of our, out of what we know. But, uh, if it's just written like that, you can just assume they mean Y as a function of T.
Yeah.
Not X, and so then.
Okay, okay. So this is, okay, I, I got scared for a second. I was like, what's this T doing here? Okay, we're good.
Good.
All right.
Okay. Okay, so if there's any more questions, let me know. Otherwise, have a good night, guys. Good luck on the test tomorrow. Everything goes well.
Thank you.
Bye, people. Good luck.
Yes, yes.
So for, for that last question that you had, that was from the quiz, that was kinda weird. Uh, yeah, which, which one of those, uh, solutions is correct? That one, okay, gotcha. Makes sense.
Adam, are you doing your session tomorrow?
Uh, like for math?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not doing it tomorrow for math, no, cuz I don't have any time and, and we have a test, so I'll do, um. I don't know how I'll do it. I guess I'll do either a longer one next week or two next week. We'll see how.
Anyways, uh, good luck everyone. Thanks, Adam.
No problem, no problem. Good luck.
Thanks, Adam. Good luck.
No problem. Have a good night.
Adam, for that, for that last question, we're just, we don't really.